In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on Thursday, March 22nd, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Can I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmud?
Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Mrs. Gillette? Mrs. Haas? Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Page?
Here. The purpose of this session, this special meeting, is to go into executive sessions, while we'll read that motion, whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of a meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education in the Township of Hillsborough, in the County of Somerset, and the State of New Jersey as follows: The following matters will be discussed are student disciplinary matters related to harassment, intimidation, and bullying, if, a personnel matter, a superintendent's evaluation, and negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. I need a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are in executive session then. We are back in session. Mr. Mahmud, we need a roll call, please.
Sure. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Page?
Here. All right, that, we have to close that session, and then we're going to open the regular 7:30 public session. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so that session is closed, and now we're going to move on to our 7:30 session. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on Thursday, March 22nd, 2012 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And can I have a roll call, Mr. Mahmud?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogaczewski?
Here.
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mrs. Haley?
Here.
Mr. Kent?
Here.
Mrs. Lay? Mr. Pulserfer?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Here.
Mr. Page?
Here. We see our correspondents listed, not surprisingly, most of them have to do with the budget. And then we're ready to move on to our superintendent's report. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you, Dr. Page. I have some wonderful news to share with the board and the community tonight. The National Honor Society induction ceremony was held on Tuesday, March 20th. This year, 98 new inductees joined the existing 42 members as representatives of the Hillsborough High School chapter of the National Honor Society, where the core tenets of scholarship, character, service, and leadership are equally recognized and lauded. Congratulations to the numerous members of the National Honor Society. Also, congratulations goes to sophomore Devon Mason. Devon has been selected as recipient of the American Association for Teachers of German and has won a study trip to Germany. Her application stood out among the many strong applications from across the nation, and a selection committee was particularly impressed with her enthusiasm for German. Devon will receive a round trip, air transport to and from Germany, live in a home, attend classes, and participate in excursions to places of cultural and historical significance. Let's recognize Devon for her wonderful recognition. Next, Hillsborough High School senior Ayesha Jackson was honored with the President's Volunteer Service Award for her exemplary volunteer service. This award was presented by the Prudential Spirit of Community Awards Program on behalf of President Barack Obama. Ayesha earned her award by volunteering at a local nursing home and on building projects for families in need. Finally, elementary, Hillsborough Elementary School student Kayla Hozdovic was selected as one of the outstanding school safety patrollers through the AAA Mid-Atlantic Foundation for Safety and Education. Kayla was nominated by the faculty at Hillsborough Elementary School and will be honored at an awards luncheon in April. Congratulations to Kayla. My final announcement is about the calendar. Due to the fact that we still have two unused snow days, if there's no additional emergency days, we will be closed on May 24th and May 29th. Notification will be sent out to the community at that time. I also, tonight, will be presenting to the board, as well as the public, the proposed budget for the 2012-2013 school year. As the board may recall, I did present the tentative budget recently to the board. It has changed slightly to the proposed budget, and I look forward to sharing it during the Section 6 of the agenda entitled "Public Hearing on the 2012-2013 Budget." That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions from the public regarding the superintendent's report? Any questions from the board regarding the superintendent's report? All right. We're going to move on to approval of minutes. We're going to start with the March 5th, 2012 special meeting. I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
Abstained.
All right, on the March 5th, 2012 executive session, I need a motion? And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions?
Abstained.
This was for the March 12th?
Uh, 5th.
Abstained.
Yep. All right, moving on to March 12th, 2012 specials, special meeting. I need a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? And abstentions? And then, March 12th, 2012 executive session, I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstention.
Got them?
Yep.
All right, March 12th, 2012 regular meeting. I need a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And abstentions?
Abstention.
Thank you. All right, we're ready to move on to our board committee reports. I go left to right, so, Mr. Pulserfer, you start with Human Resources, please.
Human Resources Committee met on March 15th.
You are not on, yet.
Hello?
You want to try that one?
Hello? Much better. Human Resources Committee met on March 15th with a couple items to discuss. We continued with discussions with, regarding the HEA and discussion of prescription plans for the association. We followed that with a discussion of the sub-rate as part of the continuing discussion of the budget and how to move forward on daily rates for subs. We then continued our budgetary-related discussions with a view of class levels and what we've done in the past in terms of lowering the class size, and also a review of the lost positions from the budget cuts of 2010, and what we have, positions we recouped, for lack of a better term, since that time, and the impact on the current budget and the budgets in between. And finally, on that subject, we also looked at potential issues around library coverage and possibly trying to do something to extend coverage in the high school library to provide better opportunities for the students. And then, as a last item, we discussed the timeline and the process for doing the superintendent's evaluation, the board secretary evaluation, and the board self-evaluation, which are underway, and we will continue that process through this week and next week. And that was all.
Thank you. Mr. Gillette?
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Page. The Operations Committee met on March 14th. We had just a couple of items on the agenda. The first item was to continue to review and make proposals for the budget. We took the recommendations of the committees and the, actually, the board members at the previous board meeting into consideration, and you'll see that in your, reflected tonight, I think. Also, we took a look at the, let me skip ahead here. I don't want to go out of order. There's a longstanding testing and remediation project for some soil contamination at Bloomingdale School. This is nothing new. This is decades old at this point, and we received a report from Prestige Environmental. We reviewed that with Mr. Frusco, and we were asking, the report is all mixed all over the place, everything is fine, they're just going about the same old testing, nothing really major or interesting, except that we'd like to have this done eventually someday. So we directed Mr. Frusco to find out how we can finally get everything there done, and we're looking into that. And finally, of interest to the board, tonight, we'll be having our first reading on new policy, sort of cementing the board committee structure that we've been using since, I guess it was beginning of the year, since January or so. And we're going to be, that'll be on for first reading tonight. We took a look at that. We had some minor changes to the policy that the administration had prepared for us, and those changes have been made, and you saw that in your packet. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haas and the Education Committee?
Okay, the Education Committee met on March 15th and had a very busy schedule, as we usually do. We discussed Race to the Top, which now turns out to be a $17,695 grant if we go forward and complete the application process. And there are basically five areas in which it could be used, and Dr. Antunes noted that we would use the funds most likely toward professional development and technology if we received them, and not teacher evaluation or for charter schools. We expressed Mr. Kent's concerns about terms and conditions that might be attached to that board, and we are going to continue to review the implications of accepting the grant. The process continues, however. We also got a report on the Try Learning programs that are happening at Sunnymead School and Woodford Schools. These are schools funded, these are programs funded by Title I funds, and they're really quite wonderful. It's for at-risk students and their parents and teachers who work together in the evenings and enhance education for the students. And by bringing everybody together in a partnership, it has been working really well, and I commend the people who brought that together. We approved two textbooks. One was a social studies textbook for the AP American Government Class, and one for third grade science, which had a very nice lab activity book. So those were approved by the committee. We also got a report on ASI staff. This year, because of funding that was additional for the Ed Jobs Program, we were able to put additional academic support instructors in many of our elementary schools, and basically left it to each principal to adapt them to whatever needs were present in their schools. This has been a very helpful program, and some really excellent things were going on with those funds, but unfortunately, the grant is over at the end of the year, and this will only be available for the remainder of this year. We also talked about an item that was in the budget for Apple Carts for the elementary schools to be repositioned into a broader program at Orton Road, the middle school, and the high school, where the superintendent is trying to expand the iPad Pilot Program for next year to 10% of the student population. This program would involve two teams in Grade 5, one team in Grade 7, and a section of the high school still to be determined. And the goal would be to phase it in 2012-13, and those people would move up, and then to bring it in the next year, and hopefully have full implementation for 2014-15. So that was one of the other things. We also have some good news for our diligent teachers who have already completed their mandatory training tests. We have an in-service on May 18th, and those employees who have completed the mandatory training tests online will be able to leave before the second half of the day. So that was a little bonus that people were given for doing those things on their own time. It's like a three-and-a-half-hour process to complete all these tests. And just so that the public knows, all of our teachers, at all times, have various other requirements that you may not be aware of, but these mandatory training tests include gang awareness, bloodborne pathogens, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and sexual harassment. And as I said, it takes up to three-and-a-half hours to complete all this material. So we thought it would be fair to let them have off for half of the in-service day. We also talked very much about the budget items, and the Education Committee went through the 67 positions that were eliminated in the 2010-11 budget. We very specifically were concerned about class sizes, and there were further discussions with the Operations Committee, and we asked that the Operations Committee consider two additional targeted class-size reduction positions, in addition to all of the other things that had been previously added. And just two other quick things. It turns out that Take Your Child to Work Day conflicts with New Jersey ASK testing in Grade 7 and 8 this year. So Dr. Antunes was trying to find out from the Department of Education what the expectations would be in regard to that, and to date has not received an answer?
No.
That's sad. Okay. And we also discussed whether it would be possible to reinstate supervisor reports at Board of Ed meetings. I particularly felt it was important, and the reports in the past have been very informative in terms of helping board members, particularly new board members, find out about the day-to-day curriculum work that goes on in our district. So those were the recommendations of the Education Committee.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the public regarding the board committee reports? All right, seeing none. Is there any questions from the board? Mr. Pulserfer?
Actually, another question. Another question, one item I forgot to mention. We did also discuss the policy required by law regarding residency requirements for employees of the district. So we did discuss the, not only the policy, but the impact on recruiting and hiring on a forward-moving basis.
Thank you. All right. Public want a question about that? All right, no. All right, on to questions. Mrs. Haley?
I know that we had discussed this before with the Race to the Top Grant, and how much, we have an estimate of how much money we're going to be spending putting together the application versus what we're actually going to receive, and what's the net-net benefit?
I don't know those dollar figures, but the work that is being done, for the most part, on the grant, we would need to do anyway. So the teacher evaluation model, we're going to be implementing new teacher evaluation models as per, not only our strategic plan, but as per the Department of Education's commitment to it. There is a cost associated with that. The $17,000 that Mrs. Haas indicated as part of the Race to the Top 3 Grant would help offset that. So these are, these are practices that we would be doing anyway.
Mr. Kent?
The amount of time that it actually takes our administrators to write the grant, what's the, what's the burden for that?
Again, I don't know the actual cost or how many hours go into the development of the grant. It is not unsurmountable. I wouldn't call it insignificant. It's still part of Dr. Antunes's time and day, but our calculus is that it's, it will help offset that cost without significantly impacting beyond what we would be doing anyway within the district.
Thank you.
Dr. Rosenberg?
With regard to this grant, do we know that applying for and receiving this grant, is there any benefit for future grants? If we were to get into the program now, even though the amount of money is not significant, does it make any difference in terms of grants that might come up in the future, whether we are participating at an early stage like this? I don't know if it does or it doesn't, but that might be a factor to weigh.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that question either, but it's, Race to the Top money seems to be coming, but less and less every, every single year. So it's really a matter of federal appropriations and federal funding, whether or not we would have it. The people that participated, the states that actually participated in Round 1 also have opportunities in other rounds. I would assume that that would be similar to districts. But to answer you directly, I don't know, but we can find out for you.
Yeah, I had a quick question about the residency policy that we're going to be reading, do the first reading. I might have missed that part of the committee meeting, but, so it's a law now?
Yes.
And we have no choice about that one, I guess?
I believe, and Scott, you can clarify if I'm wrong here, but I believe current employees in the district are grandfathered, and any new hiring must be residents of the state. Now, as you can imagine, it's not, not great for us, but you can imagine the districts like, you know, borderline districts, you know, Phillipsburg, even, even 100 Central, really, I mean, you know, you get west of the state, it's going to be a lot harder to comply with this law, so I'm, I'm not sure I get what the purpose of the law really is. But, but it is, it is a law, and we are required to follow that on a going-forward basis, and that's what the policy is there for.
Okay. Mr. Kent?
Just to follow up on that, that law went in September 1st, I think was the effective date. Are there any employees that are potentially impacted that have been hired since then, or?
None that we have right now that are potentially impacted. On September 1, if you lived out of state, you were grandfathered. From that point forward, you have to live in state. You have a year to move into state. So right now, we don't have anybody that is impacted on it.
Thank you. All right, seeing no more questions, I think we're ready to move on to our public hearing. Dr. Schiff's going to start with his presentation.
Thank you. Tonight, what I'm going to share with you is what we're calling the proposed budget rather than the tentative budget. It is slightly different than the budget that was presented previously. I'm going to try to highlight those differences as we go through this presentation, which is really just edited from the tentative budget presentation. So if we could turn off the lights so people can see it a little bit more clearly, I'll begin. I'd like to start off just by giving a little bit of background, as I did before, on the budget development process. We begin this process in October, and our, all of our budget managers, which includes our department heads, as well as our principals, submit to Mr. Mahmud and myself their request for, for spending for year 2012-2013. During that month and into December, we then finalize the administrative budget that is presented then to the full board. The board is broken into, as was discussed a little bit earlier tonight, into three separate committees: the Education, Operations, and Human Resources Committee. Each of those committees have oversight responsibility over a portion of the budget. Those committees then met, starting in December, to vet each section of the budget that they have oversight responsibilities. In February, as I mentioned before, February 23rd, we received our state aid. When I developed, along with Mr. Mahmud, the administrative budget, we made certain assumptions about what the revenue side was going to look like. Our assumption was that we were not going to receive a penny more in state aid than what we did the year prior. On February 23rd, we found out that we received 7.2% increase of what we received the year prior. That was approximately $1.67 million more. At that point, the committees then met again to discuss high-priority needs, and on March 3rd, which was a Saturday, the Operations Committee met with me, Mr. Eckert, and Mr. Mahmud to put the final preparations on the tentative budget. And we did that by looking at high priorities that weren't in the budget, that we used the unanticipated revenues to fund, as well as trying to balance what our community would support. That budget was then presented on March 5th to this body. The board did vote to approve the tentative budget, however, that, that board vote was split, and there were concerns about certain needs that were still not being addressed within the budget. The following two weeks, the board committees met, you heard the committee reports tonight, to reexamine those particular priorities and, and see if we can address even more within the budget. Tonight, we're presenting, this is our final budget. The board will vote on it, and after listening to public comment at a hearing that will immediately follow this presentation, we'll vote on the budget. And then, the public has the opportunity to vote on the budget. April 17th is our school board and budget vote. As the public may recall, there is a new law that allows school board elections to be moved to November and not to have a budget vote unless it is below cap. This board has made a decision not to move it in order to allow for the budget vote and school board election at the, on April 17th. Now, in terms of what is different between current budget and the proposed budget, the largest increase still is in the area of curriculum instruction. This is due to the fact that the State Department of Education has mandated that all curriculum areas are revised up to current standards. Typically, we do not revise multiple curriculum areas annually. As a result of having to review, revise every single one, with the exception of math and science, we had to pulse or increase that budget quite significantly. Another area that is new to the budget next year is the implementation of a new world language program at K through 4. As some of you may recall, in the 10-11 school year, elementary world language was eliminated from the curriculum in Hillsborough. We are now bringing that back, coming back into compliance with this particular program, but we're also making it better than what it was before. It was a Spanish program. Now, we're going to offer Spanish, as well as Mandarin-Chinese. This year, in current budget, we added five-and-a-half elementary school teachers. That had the effect of lowering class size at the elementary level. Next year, we're going to be focusing in on lowering class sizes at the middle and the high school level, and I'll show those details with you in a few moments. We're also making a commitment of being more competitive on our sub-rate. One of the changes that was made in between the tentative budget and the final budget is to move back up the amount of money that we're dedicating to substitutes so that they will earn $10 more per day than they currently earn. That will actually make us much more competitive in keeping our substitutes from leaving our district and going to neighboring districts that pay more. Also, in terms of lowering class size, as you heard from the committee reports, there was concern about doing more in that area. As a result of the discussions at the committees over the past week and a half, we have added, from the tentative budget, two additional targeted class-size reduction positions at the high school. As I shared at the tentative budget, we are increasing our spending in the area of staff development and doing it in a way that is research-based, having teachers train teachers rather than have consultants from the outside train teachers. This is, this is what we call job-embedded staff development. It allows people that know our students the best, our curriculum the best, know their colleagues the best, in order to connect the dots between the new learning and how they can apply it the very next day in the classroom. We're also updating all of the teacher workstations throughout the district. Teachers will no longer be working on desktop computers. All will have laptop computers. The laptop's actually, the top flips up, and then it flips around, and then it can come back down again. So it functions as both a tablet as well as a laptop computer. We are increasing our investments in capital. This has been increased from the tentative budget, another $80,000 to hit all of the high-priority unbudgeted items that were requested by, by administration. We're also, we also took the requests of the board on March 5th to increase from halftime guidance counselor, which was a new position in the tentative budget, to full-time guidance, as well as a halftime nurse at the high school to a full-time nurse. Again, another change from, from the tentative budget to the final budget. We're also going to be completing a comprehensive energy audit at all schools. That's going to be completed over the summer, the, the process of which will allow us to determine whether certain large-capital whether certain large-capital projects will be eligible for an energy savings improvement plan, which allows a district to bond for those large-capital improvement projects, but pay for the interest and principal with the savings that one realizes by having more energy-efficient capital projects going on. So more energy-efficient boilers, roofs, windows, lighting, those type of large-capital costs can pay for themselves through the savings, and that's what the energy savings improvement plan is all about. Now, very briefly on the tax levy. Our tax levy cannot increase more than 2% from the prior year. We take a look at how much the general fund levy changed between what we're asking for in next year's levy versus this year's levy. Going to 2% would be 1.5 million. The tentative budget now comes in slightly below $1 million. And those of you who recall, the tentative budget was slightly above $1 million at this point. How does that affect the tax levy? The tax levy will increase by about one-half of 1%, which is an increase of a penny on the tax rate. So for the average homeowner, they'll see an increase of $37 for the year. An average home is assessed at a value of $368,700. I don't know if this is that easy for you in the back to see, but this is the average home here at $36,800, $37 for the year. But if you live in a home that's assessed at $150,000, you would see your taxes, property taxes, go up by $15 for the year. If you live in a home that's assessed at $700,000, you would see property taxes increase by $70 for the year. Millstone is actually part of Hillsborough Township Public Schools. Millstone also has a tax levy calculation. Their levy is actually decreasing. It's decreasing by a quarter of 1%. However, because of a drop in the ratable base in Millstone, and the ratables are the taxable properties in Hillsborough, because that has dropped by over 5.5%, Millstone's property tax owners will see an increase. The average home is assessed in Millstone at $324,474, and they would see an increase of $209 for the year. Now, if one lives in a home assessed at $150,000 in Millstone, they would see their taxes increase by $97 for the year. If they lived in a home assessed at $700,000, they would see their property taxes increase by $451 for the year. The cost drivers in the budget are the contractual salary increases, which is not as significant as we've seen in previous budgets. The HEA and the board agreed to a 2% increase this year. The curriculum revisions, which I mentioned before, are the largest cost driver in the budget. And funding for our strategic plan in the areas of technology, staff development, curriculum and instruction facilities, as was mentioned before. Areas of cost savings, this is very important because it's unique to Hillsborough Township Public Schools. The largest area is in the area of healthcare. Healthcare is the largest cost driver in New Jersey public schools now that we have a 2% cap. However, that's not the case in Hillsborough. The reason is, is that through the collective bargaining process, the board and the HEA agreed to progressively increasing contributions to healthcare. Our teachers, our secretaries, our instructional aides, bus drivers, maintenance staff, and others in the district are contributing currently 12% towards their healthcare. Next year, it will increase to 18% of their healthcare. This type of shared sacrifice allows our district to actually expand positions, expand programs, where many districts throughout this state are continuing to deal with decreasing programs and cutting staff. That's not what we're going to be doing. We also saw recently, in between the past two weeks, that our cost for our dental is going to actually go down. It's going to go down by 4%. That decrease in our dental premiums, without changing dental providers, it's the same provider that we currently have, those dental premiums will allow us to fund an additional two positions, which were asked for by the board, without having to adjust the tax levy any more than it currently is. We do a lot of work with shared service and cooperative purchasing through the business office, which ensures that we are achieving all efficiencies that are available to us and enjoying economies of scale in our purchasing. Also, our special education programs provide a cost savings to the district. Those children, many of them very needy, we're educating within their neighborhood school rather than sending them to out-of-district schools where the tuition can be very costly for the district. Now, I don't begrudge, and none of us should begrudge, any dollar that's spent for some of our neediest, most-involved children. But by being able to keep them locally educated and educating them with their, with the friends from their neighborhood, at their local schools, with our staff, provides them with outstanding services at a significantly decreased cost than sending them out of district. The next area of cost savings is actually revenue generating. We have been successful in our first year of the Children at Play program. We were actually generating some revenue through that. We have, our initial deposits were due last week. We have increased our enrollment from 31 to 40-some.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. But we anticipate that that will continue to grow as we get closer to September. So that's good news there. Behind me is a chart that I shared with you before. This is total per pupil spending that is comparative. This data is available for the public to view on the Department of Education website. It's taken directly from the most recent comparative analysis entitled "The Taxpayer's Guide to Educational Spending," May 2011. This shows the difference between how we spend relative to how the state and similar districts spend. When we take a look at total administrative per pupil, we still see the same disparity. We're currently not comparable. We're currently well below comparable spending. These are questions that we have discussed and debated at this day, is how much lower do you go until you question whether or not we will lose our competitive edge? How much lower do you go until you're not able to provide your students with the same type of quality that they're getting in other districts? So we're trying to respond to that disparity as well. This is what our proposed budget looks like. It's slightly different than the one that I presented on March 4th. It's broken into three different areas: the general fund, which is our operating expenses, grants and entitlements we receive from state and federal government, and our debt service, our obligations for principal and interest on bonds to build extensions to schools, and large-capital projects, et cetera. So our revised current-year budget is at $110.6 million. Our proposed budget is at $113.8 million. Key points, just to wrap up, we're approximately $1 million below cap. We'll see a slight tax increase for Hillsborough homeowners of about $37, but this budget is not just maintaining current programs. This is actually a growth budget. And I'd like to take a moment and just share with you a chart that illustrates the personnel changes that we've seen over the past three years. These first three columns here, A through C, illustrate the reductions that were made during the 10-11 school year, when school districts throughout New Jersey saw historic reductions in their state aid. These are all of the positions that were cut during that particular year. You can see in red, minus ones all the way down, from administrative and other positions, these are all of the teaching positions that were eliminated that year. And these are the classroom assistants that were eliminated, for a grand total reduction of 66.5 positions. Now, in current year, in current year, we began to restore some positions and add additional needed positions. We restored some administrative positions in the district, and we restored, as I said, 5.5 teaching positions, these elementary positions, which had the effect of lowering class size at the elementary level. We also added special education and ASI teachers. However, we did reduce library assistance last year as a result of the directive from the executive county superintendent of schools at the time. Our total increase for current year is 8.5 positions. Now, what we're asking for is part of the proposed budget for board consideration tonight. We have three tech trainers in the district currently. Those are funded through a one-year, non-renewable federal grant called the Ed Jobs Grant. We are asking for two additions, or two positions to keep two out of the three, as well as add two computer tech positions. We are also asking for the ability to reduce our class sizes at the middle school. All four of those are part-time positions. They're in the related arts at the middle school. These positions here are the elementary world language position. Those are the Spanish positions, and these are the teachers of Chinese. We also have some special education teachers at ARIS, as well as the elementary school. We have increased from part-time to full-time the request for guidance counselor. We've also increased the request from part-time to full-time for the school nurse at the high school, as well as these two positions for targeted class size were in the tentative budget. We're asking for, in the proposed budget, to increase that by two for a total of four targeted-class-size-reduction positions at the high school, as well as a special education teacher. Our total staffing increase request is 22 full-time equivalent positions. That is significant in our district's history. However, I would just put it into perspective that we're still not even halfway to where we were two years ago on our staffing. So I hope that illustrates for the community, as well as for the board, some of the differences between the tentative and the proposed budget tonight, as well specifically at the staffing and the increases in that area. Again, this budget is a balance between what we feel addresses the needs and the desires of our students in our district, as well as what the community can support. And with that, I conclude my presentation. I'll be available for questions.
We are at the point in the agenda where it's public input on the 2012, 2013 budget, so you also have information from the superintendent's presentation here. So at this time, if you would like to come up and give input on the budget, this is the time. Go up to the microphone, give your name and address, please.
Before this gentleman talks, I just want to make mention that the user-friendly budget is available for public review. We do have handouts here. That information, as well as additional information, will be on our district website tomorrow.
Yeah, my name is Shangar Nandri. I live in Hillsborough. I've lived here for almost 23 years now. I have several questions. The first question is on the teachers for special languages or the old world languages you mentioned. Is there a specific reason as to why you want to teach Mandarin and Spanish in school on a formal basis?
Yeah, we had a world language task force that convened a while ago, and I know that the education committee was very involved in that, too, and I may throw it over to Mrs. Haas for her comments as well. But there was a community survey. There was a lot of discussion about what are the world languages that we need to, we need to have our kids exposed to in order to enhance their opportunities as they leave Hillsborough Township Schools and enter into the world of work. This Mandarin Chinese is a language that we're seeing a lot more in public schools now. This is a beginning of a process of adding additional, at least one language, possibly more languages, in the future. Currently, we do not offer Mandarin Chinese at ARIS, the middle school, or the high school, but we anticipate we'll be doing so in the future in order to continue that opportunity as kids move through the grades. That some of the children will want to have a Chinese 4, Chinese 5 option when they, before they graduate from high school.
Well, I think from what you've said, Dr. Schiff, with all due respect, I think the decision seems to have been taken based on nice-to-have rather than really, from an industrial perspective, a useful thing. Now, I work in an industrial, in a private enterprise, and I'll tell you, people don't even know how to write a correct sentences, and I'd rather they write properly and are proper English sentences rather than be learning Chinese. And I think there is a little bit of speculation on your part that they should be learning these languages, and therefore they'll be very useful in industry or in a corporate world. I can tell you point-blank, it's a waste of time. So my own suggestion as a taxpayer is really to drop this for now, and I think those who want to learn this as a special language, they can take private lessons. There are plenty of places they can go and take private lessons. Now, obviously, I don't want you to answer all that. Now, the other question I have, or the concern I have, is that when you do your budget, you are looking at the ceiling that you have for 2%, which is a 2% increase in the property taxes. Now, I will tell you that instead of looking at an increase, people should be looking at a decrease, and the reason is this. I don't know if you're reading newspapers. Recently, the automobile industry has started to take off a little bit, and the reason is that the salaries of people who used to make $60,000 to $70,000 is now down to $40,000 to $50,000. It's making them more competitive on a global basis. Now, $40,000 to $50,000, they're not going to be able to afford a fancy house, certainly not in Hillsborough anyway, for sure. But you see, we are now in a globally competitive world, and I think you see that all the surveys that have been taking place are saying that the only way we can compete against foreign is to have a cost of living comparable to what's going on in the outside world. Now, of course, hopefully, their costs will go up and ours will come down a little bit, so we'll probably balance out. But that's what is going on in real world. You drive down in Hillsborough, the growth is in retail businesses, low-paying jobs. The increases they get come to about $200, $300 a year. So even if you're talking about $37 increase in tax, it's a significant tax for a lot of people. So the whole basis of the society and the industry and the economy is changing. And I think, based on the way you've been explaining to me, with all due respect, I don't think that people are fully appreciating what's going on in the real world. You know, there is a struggle all over the place. And so I think I need, you know, that's why I'm asking all these questions, because I really want you to be aware of what's really happening all the time. Now, I'm really very encouraged by the fact that you are contributing more towards the healthcare or the dental, which is a step in the right direction. I pay $14,000 towards healthcare myself, totally from my own paycheck, for three of us. And I think in private industry, you will see that people are paying a lot. I have a very, very good dentist that I know, and this dentist, by the way, tells me that she has patients come in, and they do root canals, but they cannot afford to pay even a copayment. So what they do is they'll get the root canal done and get it desensitized, and when they save enough, they'll come and get the crown done. This is real world. This is going on all over the place. So when I see that you're increasing it by 2%, I'm saying that's 2% too much. You know, you really need to start looking at how do we make ourselves more competitive, and how do we bring the cost of living to a level where people can have reasonable jobs and be able to afford?
Thank you for your comments. Just to clarify, we're not increasing by 2%. We're increasing by approximately one-half of 1%.
You had a budget proposed which was $3 million more than last year.
That's correct, but that...
Which would be approximately, if it were more than 2%, would you not?
No, that is correct, but in terms of the tax levy, the changes in people's taxes, what they pay out of their pocket, is going up less than one-half, or actually, slightly more than one-half of 1%.
And also, I read a comment here by somebody, by Judy Haas, and it says here, "A board member, Judy Haas warned March 5 that the decision not to use more of the allowed and available money could haunt the district for years to come." Believe me, I almost fell off my chair when I read that. Haunt the district about what? You must, you see, traditionally, when people got budgets, traditionally, people, if they had some money left over, they would lose it, and next year, they probably may not get it. So the attitude was, spend it. Well, I think the whole dynamics have changed now, quite honestly. So, you know, the more you can save, the more you can put it away is better than to spend it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for taking time to listen to me.
Hi.
Hi, Amy Salinger. I live in Bridgewater, but I teach in Hillsborough. I have two questions about the Attachment C-8, which is what I printed out, so I'm not an expert, so I'll try to ask my questions as best I can. The first one is, at a Board of Ed meeting earlier this year, there was a discussion about the possibility of two charter schools that we would have to appropriate funds towards, so I just had a question about an update on that. Is that in here, or is that off the table?
The, there are no applications at this time for charter schools in the area.
Okay, so that's not in this budget. All right. And then, in regards to healthcare expenditures, I'm looking on page E9 of Attachment C-8 from tonight. That was on the one online. So it's where it says, it's appropriations for health benefits. And in 2010 to '11, which was last year, it's like $14.5 million. It goes down to about $13.8 million for this year, and then $13.08 for next year. So it's going down each year.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page E9. And it's not the user-friendly one. It's Attachment C-8, that was on the website.
Yep, I see where you are.
Okay. It's like towards the, just below, a little below halfway down. You there?
Yep, account number 11, triple zero, 291, 270.
Yes, that's the one. Okay. Is that because of the switch from Horizon to the state health plan, like is that where that decreases in the expenditures?
No, the decrease in the expenditure between the 11, 12 revised and the 12, 13 appropriations, which is our request for next year's budget, is due to the increase in the contribution to healthcare from 12% to 18%.
All right, because that was my question, is, does that include, like, is that after the 12% and the 18% come out, or is that before?
That's after.
So that's after.
Right.
So then where is the 12% and the 18% in this budget? Like, should that be listed as a revenue source, or is it just redistributed in other areas here?
Now, if you take a look at the difference between the appropriation there, it's close to $700,000. That $700,000 goes for things like the additional positions that we have.
Right, no, I understand where it goes towards. My question is, how is it reported in this budget? Like, when it comes out of our paycheck, where does it go? Like, does it, like, should it be listed as a revenue? Should it be listed?
It's a lower expenditure, and that's why you're seeing the savings there under healthcare. That's where you see the difference. It's less of an expenditure, not a revenue within the district.
So the contribution isn't considered a revenue? It's, what does it consist? It's just...
It lowers our cost.
Right. Okay, that was my question. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hello. Just to introduce myself, I am a senior at Hillsborough High School, and I'm here to address an issue I've noticed with Hillsborough High School's library.
Do you want to name and address?
Oh, Craig Gambogi, 28, Matrix Court.
Thank you.
Sorry. And hopefully propose a change. So as, last year, I believe, there was a, actually cuts made to the number of library aides at Hillsborough High School's library, and as a result, the library hours at our school go from 7:15 to 2:45, with the exception of Monday, when the library ends at 2:25. And our school hours run from 7:30 to 2:25, and this leaves about 35 minutes outside of the school day for students to actually use the library. And I believe that this is a major problem for a couple of reasons. First, most students, because of these inconvenient hours, are not actually able to check out books. There's so little time before and after school, most students don't even bother, and most of the books at our library are not actually used. Second, for students who need access, don't have access to a computer, a printer, or the internet home, they can rely on these public facilities, and they can't actually use the library very effectively because of these limited hours. Third, every day before school, most students will notice that there's a large buildup of students waiting outside the library, because it doesn't start until 7:15. And then, once the library actually opens, the, so many of the computers are immediately taken up, that students, some students don't even actually ever get the opportunity to use the computers. And fourth, student athletes, or students who are part of a club, do not actually, will have even less time to use these, use the library, because they are either preoccupied before or after school. And for all these reasons, Hillsborough High School's library is not being used to its fullest potential. And as a result, to demonstrate how widespread the concern of the student population for this issue is, I gathered a petition of about 600 signatures to hopefully extend the library hours, and I'm hoping that in this budget change, we can make this an issue that we can hopefully tackle. So, thank you.
Thank you.
What's that?
We're actually going to be looking at that very carefully. This year, we share your concern about the availability of the library, and this has come up for multiple discussions at this day. Our Human Resources Committee has tasked administration to find a solution for this next year. We're not exactly sure how we're going to do it, but we're going to make some type of adjustment, either into substitute schedules or other type of things, in order to have the library open for longer hours. So we're committed to doing that. How we're doing it, I can't answer you right now, but we will be, we'll be looking at having greater hours for the high school library next year.
Okay, thank you.
And if you'd like to present the petition, we'd be happy to take it.
Yeah, sure. Would you like me to give you that afterwards, or?
Either way, whatever, whatever, fine. I know that we may have some other people that may want to speak, so if you would like to bring it up now, that would be fine.
Give it to the board secretary. Give it to this guy. Then it's official.
Hello, my name is Sri Ragavan, and I'm a senior at Hillsborough High School. My question centers on educational resources, and you may be wondering why I'm asking this, because I'm a graduating senior, and I really don't have much of an interest for myself. This is for the freshman, sophomore, and junior students who are going to be facing these problems the next few years. Basically, I mean, the budget centers on hiring new teachers, for example, as you had mentioned, but I was wondering if there was anything specific we could do about educational resources, such as textbooks and learning supplies. Over the last couple of years, I've noticed that, in the high school in particular, these supplies are deficient. An example would be history classes, where the books often tend to be old, worn out, or even need to be updated, so that students can have a better sense of what to learn and learn more efficiently. So I was wondering if the committee had any plans for supplying students with new resources. I mean, I've been an AP student in AP classes, and I've seen that even those books tend to be outdated. So I can imagine that for lower-level classes, I'm sure that, you know, several improvements would have, would have to be made as well. So I just wanted to ask if you were planning to do anything specific.
Thank you for that question. We, the largest area of cost increase in the budget is in the area of curriculum, and that includes textbooks, student supplies, and other areas. Remember, we're going to be revising loads of curriculum areas, every area, with the exception of math and science moving forward. So typically, we write the curriculum first, and then we do a textbook adoption subsequent to that. So we're also looking at electronic textbooks and what that field has to offer as well. So it's a very exciting time, especially how technology can integrate itself into the classroom environment.
Thank you. And one more follow-up. My sister is in the middle school, and she mentioned that, vaguely mentioned, so I don't know if this is completely accurate, that next year, kids in the honors program would receive an iPad, if I'm not mistaken. I was wondering if that is extended to middle school students. I mean, why a similar policy couldn't be implemented for kids in higher grades as well?
Tell her only if she gets an A.
Okay.
Mrs. Haas actually spoke about this a little bit in her committee report, that we're looking at expanding. We currently have two pilots going on in the district, one in two sections of ninth grade Algebra I, and two sections of seventh grade Algebra I at the middle school, where kids are given either tablets. One's the iPad, the other is an Android tablet. And they do a lot of work with it, and at the high school in particular, the textbook is supplanted by the online text. We wish to broaden those pilots next year. We're going to be broadening it to hopefully about 10% of the kids the following year, and that's one of the ways that we're also providing additional resources for the students.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jody Morrison, 23, Crowell Road. Question on the budget again. The employees gave a concession of $3.2 million for the 2011-2012 school year. Where exactly is that reflected in the budget? It has to be a deposit somewhere, and it has to be a debit. What line item is that under? Because we can't seem to find it, and that's what we're looking for.
You're looking for a line item that says $3.2 million of concession?
Somewhere the money has to come in, so that you can pay out. So it has to go somewhere. So where are you accounting for that money that's coming in?
Well, what I can tell you, and I think your question goes deeper than what I'm probably going to answer it, but forgive me for a moment. The healthcare concession that was made was a change from the state health, the change from the private provider, Horizon Private, into the state health benefits plan. Those savings occurred in between the 2011 and the 2010-2011 and the 2011-2012, from last year to this year's budget. So, you know, if you take a look at that particular line itself, it is, that was reduced by about, what is that, maybe $700,000, $800,000 from one year to the next. The following school year, we saw, which is what Amy asked about, which was the difference between next year's budget and current year's budget, which is about $700,000 in savings. That may be what you're, you know, what you're calling the $3.2 million concession, but this explains and clearly outlines the healthcare savings as a result of it. Now, the other part of this, Jody, that you need to, that may be helpful, is that these show reductions in cost estimates from this year to next year, and from last year to this year. But we would also have had to budget for increases in those areas. So even though there may be a 5%, 6% savings that we're showing here, we would have had to budget an additional 15% to 20% on top of it to deal with the healthcare increases that were going on. So this doesn't reflect fully the savings that is going on, because we would have, we would have had to have budgeted for increases in that area. And by the way, the most significant increase in the entire budget was in the healthcare increases. Mr. Gillette?
Oh, yeah, I wanted to highlight something Dr. Schiff said, actually, in his budget presentation, about the impact of the concession from the teachers' union towards the healthcare contribution. In 2009, for the 2009-10 budget, that was the year we actually received a state aid increase. Yet we still, because of unsustainable wage increases and healthcare costs that were increasing beyond our control, we still had to eliminate about a dozen positions that year. That was the year we got an increase. The next year, when we began planning for the 2010-2011 budget, we knew things were tough, and we were planning for a zero state aid increase. In that preliminary plan, back in maybe January of that year, we slated for another dozen positions to be eliminated. Of course, it turned into 66 later, when we took a $5 million hit. But you see, just over those couple of years, even with one year with a state aid increase, the healthcare benefits that were just rising so great that it was just not sustainable. We would have been every year with cutting a dozen positions a year, just to pay for healthcare. That doesn't work. So you see now, just the second year, now, we're going to be getting the second year with employee contribution, significant employee contribution, and already, we've been able to, in those two years, add back 29 and a half positions of the 66 that were lost in just the first two years. And that's a tremendous contribution, and it can't be, you can't say too much, enough about it, because this is what we want. We don't want the disruption to our students. We don't want the disruption to our community, which comes from constant layoffs and shifting around, and class size increases. We want to go on the other path, and this is what put us on the other path.
I wish I could answer you directly, because I don't mean to sound like I'm kind of defraying the, you know, the answer here, but we have made significant increases in our investments for capital in this budget. We also made a million-dollar deposit into the cap reserve that can be used to fund new roofs in the district that are sorely needed. We also have put a lot of money into our staff development and curriculum development. I can't kind of chop that up into the $3 million that you're talking about in terms of concessions, but that has what has been the effect of this.
Right. We understand that. I think what we're looking for is just the back-to-basic, general ledger accounting of, you get $10 given into the board, it shows up somewhere, somewhere on a ledger, that we're getting 10-plus dollars. We've spent six, we have four left over. I guess we're just looking for the regular, general ledger accounting of it. Basic accounting. Where is it coming from? Where do we see it? That you're getting it, and where is it, where are we, I mean, I know we're not going to see it going out because it's spread all over, but where is it coming in? Where is it shown on the report of where it's coming in?
We are required to follow GAAP accounting principles, which is generally accepted accounting principle. So this is industry standards. We're not playing games with our ledger in order to do that.
Oh, I know. We're just, you know, we look at such a big number, and we say, well, we're looking at the budget, and we're saying, but where is that money coming in, so that we could see that it's being dispersed to other...
Your question is specific to accounting, and I'll defer to Mr. Mahmood if there's an answer that I haven't...
You get me, right?
...importantly generated. I understand where you're coming from.
We're looking at, where does that money go, you know, where is, we want to see that number coming in, and then when, where you disperse it. We understand it's going to all different light items and account items. We understand that, but where can we see it coming in?
Let's see if I can do a simple one.
Go ahead. Give it a shot.
So, I think this also speaks to the earlier question, that when we have to pay less for insurance, that means that that line item goes down. We don't, it's not counted as you pay us, and then we pay the state in their ledgers. The money goes...
But it's coming in somewhere. Go ahead. But it's coming in.
Jody, if I may, let me talk about the accounting aspect of it, and what it's called on the accounting terms. It's called a contra account. What we do is we lower the appropriation by the amount that is generated from the employees on their contribution. A contra account, you can look it up in any accounting book, is pretty simple. It's not on the revenue side, and that would explain it.
There you go. Thank you very much. And you know I'll be checking that, because, you know, we've got the connection. Thank you.
Can I just, I want to clarify something. Come on.
It's public input. I mean, technically.
We left it all hanging.
We can address it later, Greg. But when it's a board's turn, we can always address.
Go ahead.
Shelley Gamalka, 32, Joshua Drive. I'd just like to comment that I am happy, thank you, Dr. Schiff, after saying I would be at this meeting, to find that you took the halftime guidance counselor and made that into a full-time position. I think we have a wonderful program. We have bright, motivated students. The area beside, you know, the guidance counselors have a lot to do. They need extra help in just what they need to do. But I think one area that they're lacking and have been is the college and career guidance part of that. We had our little discussion.
Yes, yes.
You know, so I'd kind of like to bring it up here. I'd like to suggest and hope that maybe when you're looking for that full-time position, you could find someone who has specific experience in the college and career guidance. We need someone to help these kids. Talking to other students, other parents and districts and teachers, particularly Hunter and Central, they have one. They help their students with essays, with interviews, scholarships. Our kids need to be able to go to the schools they want with more help. They're just not getting it. I've been through it once, did not get the help that I needed. About to go through it again. They need specific help from their guidance counselor to be able to get this college and get the scholarship, and know where to get it and how to do it. So since you do have that, I'd like to suggest that maybe you look for someone who could start gearing the guidance department towards that, and give the help, you know.
Absolutely. In fact, Mr. Rocco has prepared a draft of a job description for the position of college and career counselor, which would be what our recommendation will be to the board for tasking that particular position, for those very reasons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, if people are waiting to come up and speak, and you're sitting in your seat, I'd appreciate if you moved there, so I could judge how many more people we have. I'd appreciate if you moved there so I could judge how many more people we have. If we're done, we can move on, but I don't want to cut people off. But I don't want the, the big spaces in between, if you get my drift. So if you're thinking of speaking, go on over there.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hi, I'm Karen Matthews. I live in town in Hillsborough on Torres Drive. I am a parent of a third grader and I'm from New York, so you'll hear my accent. And I am a teacher right here in Hillsborough. So I get many, many questions from many, many friends that I have in the area. I'm very social. And when they hear that I'm a teacher, they always call, send me questions. Please ask, why is it so important that you get? I mean, I don't know how to answer this question. That's why I'm coming here. How do I answer this? Why are you getting so techno, technology savvy all of a sudden when this is such a bad time in economy? You know, they really don't understand. And I try my best to explain that we're trying to just educate the students and try to get them more knowledgeable and, you know, to know what's going on in the world and to get access and gain access to many different websites, which is helpful. However, they can do that at home on their own laptops, they say to me. And they wonder now that they're hearing that possibly where teachers are going to be getting their own laptops? They say, is it really necessary? You have computers in the classroom. I mean, how do I answer that? Can you help me with this?
I, I can tell you our reasoning behind that decision. We have a strategic plan that this board has, has worked on and that we worked on together. Part of the strategic plan is to prepare our students for the 21st century skill world, which is different than the 20th century skill world. And although people may ask, well, why is it necessary to do this or that? We've been doing it forever this way. The skills that are being asked for by employers as well as preparing them for the world of work demands that we think a little bit differently about the teaching and learning process and making sure that our kids are, are prepared to meet those challenges. Now, as far as, as laptops are concerned, the board had a choice of whether to replace the old desktops that are in your classroom as well as others throughout the district with other desktops or to replace it with something that is portable within the classroom. We've made significant investments in the district even before my time here to have what's called ubiquitous wireless, which allows us to move throughout this entire district and connect to the internet. This allows for teachers to be able to project wirelessly to their projector unit that you and others have within their classroom. And it will allow kids to have an experience that when you and I were in school, we couldn't have had. Now kids are able to have experiences that are far, far different, richer, and allows them to connect with other kids more than we could ever imagine when we were in third grade, second grade. It's a very exciting time, but it's also a time where people are struggling right now. And I agree with you. Times are tough. My argument is, is that we have to do both. We have to be able to move our district forward while being sensitive to our taxpayers at this point. What I believe that this budget does is it finds that balance between trying to move our district forward at the same time not taxing to what we're, what we can tax to, which is a two percent. We could increase taxes up to that particular amount, but this board has chosen not to do that. And they've wrestled with it. This wasn't an easy decision. They've been wrestling with it for a few months at this point. But just like any good deliberative body, at, at a point in time, you come to a compromise. You come to a place where you feel that, that you tried to address those, those, those interests within the community, having a good quality school system as well as not overtaxing your community.
Okay, I, I do agree that, that for the children, it would be very helpful and keep them in the 21st century world. However, what would the cost difference be if you didn't have, this, these are the questions they're asking me. I mean, how much money would we save if we waited another year possibly or two to get laptops instead of, you know, I mean, do we have, they're wondering, don't we have some kind of, you know, most of my friends are in corporate, so they think, you know, unlike myself here, they think, you know, isn't there a warranty, you know, isn't there some, why is it, why is it less money to get a laptop? You know, so what would the difference in price be if we held off? I mean, would we save money basically if we put this on the shelf, the laptop on the shelf for a year or two? How much money could we save?
Well, currently the, we're not buying the laptops. We're leasing them over a four-year period of time. And the reason we're leasing the laptops is that if we purchased all of them at one point, it would spike our budget by over a million dollars and we would have to sacrifice something else in order to get that. By keeping it a consistent expenditure within the budget, then once those machines are no longer usable, they're at their end of life, we continue the lease with new equipment. And that, and at that point, we don't have to pulse the budget and increase spending one year and then have this feast or famine within the budget. The other kind of good news about leasing is that interest rates are at historic lows. Our interest rate for this lease was, how much, Mr. Mahmood?
One point four six.
So under one and a half percent to borrow money, which is frankly unheard of. So this is the right time to be able to do that and a time that's much more cost efficient than to pay for it all out once. Now, we would have to replace the computers anyway. So we would have to make expenditures. Laptops are not less expensive than desktops. Desktops are more expensive than, I'm sorry, laptops are more expensive than desktops.
That was what they were wondering, was the difference in the price.
Right. No, no, it's, it's more expensive to purchase a laptop than, than to purchase a desktop typically. But teaching is not like many corporate work where you're sitting at a desk and you're doing work. Teaching is an active, engaged type of thing. So in order to bring the technology to the teacher and allow the teacher to be mobile, laptops make a lot more sense. And frankly, it's where many, many districts have gone for years. So in one sense, what I've learned by being in other districts that have gone through this is that there's a lot of apprehension about change. And certainly there's apprehension about technology. But at the end of the day, after people have an opportunity to do it, many teachers that I have spoken with who have been apprehensive the first year or two doing it can't imagine teaching without it in year three or four.
Well, I'm very excited, I have to tell you, Dr. Schiff. I mean, I think it's been great with the, you know, interactive and all. I, I've been enjoying it immensely. However, I do agree, as a taxpayer myself in Hillsborough and seeing all the businesses close and when, and my friends approach me and they're very educated, like I said, they have, they work in corporate, and, and they're a little upset about the money that you're spending on, and not you personally, you know, that's being spent in the district. I mean, why not move a little slowly? Let's say, you know, they say, let's, we just got this whole interactive system down. Let's work with it a little while. Let's get used to it. You know, why rush into the whole piloting and of, of all these other tablets and why have this leasing going on? Well, they weren't sure if it was leasing or buying, but you just clarified that for me. However, it's still costing money. And I'm not really sure with the price differences. Does anyone on the board know that? I mean, is there a price difference if we were to put that on the shelf? Does anyone? Is there a business person? I'm not familiar. I don't come here much, so I'm just asking.
Put it on the shelf.
It's four hundred thousand.
Yeah, our lease payment is between three and four hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay. So would we save that much if we just stayed with what we were doing right now for another year? Just to build up some money and get used to it? That's what they're wondering.
No, we, we can't build up money within the budget for, for technology. The only way we can kind of save money is through the cap reserve, is through capital projects, but not through technology. So that's actually an issue that, that is being discussed at the state level, that we don't have a way to kind of put money away in order for larger technology expenditures in the future. But frankly, by keeping the expenditure relatively consistent with a low interest rate, that's smart finance. That, that's the way we should be doing things moving forward, rather than spiking the budget one year and doing this feast or famine type of thing.
So if you save the three hundred thousand, just say as a number, you can put that three hundred thousand toward other positions like smaller class sizes and other necessary components of education?
And then the following year, you would then fire those people and buy the technology?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
So if you hire those people instead of buying laptops and then the next year, what are you going to do? You still have to pay those people, so you, you gotta pay those people, you know? That, that's where that money's going now.
But maybe by the time next year comes, what they say is maybe we can have other ways of getting money, like maybe not paying Catholic charities aftercare and having other means, I mean, other ways to get money for the board to use for that. Right now, let's work on getting more positions because, I mean, I have a, a third grader and I could see how it benefited. I mean, Dr. Schiff made sure that he saw what happened in second grade last year and how the children were really hurting by the class sizes. And this year, they're in third grade and all of my son's friends, I know all their parents, and they could see the big difference. So it does help to have class sizes reduced. So what they're saying, can you take the money, you know, a few hundred thousand, help in that manner because they've seen it's so beneficial to their own children? And so have I, luckily. And they're just wondering, can you do that? And then look for other ways, take the next year and really do the research. Ask more people. What can, what do you think we can do? Ask parents. What, because they have a lot of ideas, but they're shy about coming forward. But maybe really, you know, put it out there, really, and really go further with it and say, we have this idea. What do you think about an, an aftercare? Instead of doing Catholic charities where parents are paying two fifty a month, aftercare, because they work till five, have the Board of Ed do it in some way or some light or some form. I'm not really sure, you know, but that's something that they're throwing around. Many, many people are working till five o'clock and need that aftercare. Why not try to put the money here like you did beautifully with the kindergarten this past year, which I believe is working out nicely? So maybe you can do the same thing. So that's just some of the ideas that I'm getting from other people. And I'd like to just put it out there to the board tonight because I, I think it's a really crucial night for voting. So if you can just think about that a bit further and hopefully take that money and see if we can do something else with it and, and try to get the parents' input more. Because there's a lot of really good ideas out there, but they're just a bit shy of, to come forward and say so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Maria DeLucia, 122 South Triangle Road. I'd like to start by saying thank you for the additions that you have made to the budget and the thoughtful budget that you have put forward and the increase to the subpay. I think that's going to be very important in alleviating some of the issues and the problems that we've been having in the schools and, and all the positions going unfilled day by day by day. And, but I did have a question. The eighty thousand dollars in addition to capital improvements, I was just curious as to what, what those were.
Sure. Mr. Mahmood, would you like to?
Sure. Do you want to put it up on the board?
Let me, let me see if I actually have it. Sorry, just give me a second. We've.
That's okay.
Okay, here it is. Let me zoom in so everybody can see it. Now, this is the full listing, correct, Mr. Mahmood?
Yes, that's the full.
Okay, so these are all the capital projects by building. You can see that some are annotated by tentative budget and then some are listed as public hearing, which were changes. I'm just going to scroll down, Mr. Mahmood, and you can kind of highlight them. See your high school painting. I see also public hearing. Addition to the annexed lockers. I'm sorry, here's more. Bloomingdale roof, or I'm sorry, Bloomingdale replacement of carpet addition. Now, that's on all of the eighty. What else was there? You know what I have? I actually have a different chart if you just hold on for a moment.
Overall, okay.
Yeah, Craig's doing it all by hand.
Doing everything. We're doing everything.
Good.
Everything he wanted.
Do you want to read a little bit?
On the high part.
Okay.
The, the eighty thousand, I'll just break it down for you.
Mm-hmm.
It's an additional, and some of this we added to some of the projects, so I'll, I may repeat myself. But thirteen thousand dollars were for the gyms and locker rooms at the high school, which is that was thirteen thousand. Seven thousand five hundred dollars was addition to, we're painting all the door jams in the one hundred, two hundred and three hundred wing along, am I going too fast? I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Okay. Along with wall sections and ceilings. We're painting the one hundreds and two hundred classrooms, the actual classrooms, that was twenty-five thousand. At the, the annexed lockers, this is in the middle school, we added five thousand. We, at Wood Fern, were installing a new wall pack and spotlighting to improve safety. That was twenty-five thousand. And at the Bloomingdale Building, we restored five thousand dollars for the removal and replacement of worn and torn carpeting. This was a safety hazard. That's five thousand. So if we take the, and I'll just repeat so you have an idea, the thirteen, the seventy-five hundred, the twenty-five thousand, the five thousand, twenty-five thousand and another five, we get the eighty thousand five hundred broken down.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Carmel Meyer. I reside at 266 Fairfield Lane and I am also a teacher in the science department in the high school. And I would just briefly like to address the needs on the high school level. I can't speak for the rest of the schools, but at least the high school, as far as our computer and technology needs. We currently are working with computers that are outdated. They've been in our classrooms, I, I'm not sure exactly how many years, but, but probably six years, seven years, maybe even more, maybe even up to ten years. And they are very slow in operating. In any given day, I frequently have multiple programs that I need to be having opened on my computer in order to be able to be effective in teaching. And what we're running into is most of us also share our classrooms. So at the end of the class schedule, I frequently am needing to close all of my windows up, any programs, if I have my chemistry textbook opened up online for the kids to be able to view something. I have to close all my screens out and get logged off, which takes several minutes at the end of the period. And there, there are times when I have already erased the board and have packed up all my stuff and the screen is still logging off. And the next teacher is there trying to get set up for her class. And so, so we are experiencing where some portability would be a great asset to us and would be time-effective in our courses and would give our students much more advantage in being able to utilize the class time that we do have available. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I see no one up, so I'm going to assume that's the end of the input for the budget. And we're going to move on to, where I think we're on to new business. If there's new business from the public at this time, do our Robo Raiders have something to say by any chance? Step on up, please. Those wishing to address the board can do so at this time. We will typically not address them. Actually, we typically will. But we sometimes refer to them to administration or board committee or future work agenda. Name and address.
Hi, I'm James Prosky. I reside at 67 Longfield Drive.
And my name is Betsy Skiel and I live at 567 South Edron.
We're representatives from Team Seventy-Five, the Hillsborough Robo Raiders, and we're here to tell you of our recent success at the Rutgers Regional.
There you go.
There we go. I'm too tall. Two weeks ago, we competed at our first competition at Rutgers University. On the first day, we held our annual bike build event where we collaborated with other teams to construct bikes to build for the Boys and Girls Club. This is a very fun event where we donated all these bikes to the Boys and Girls Club and it was very emotional for us. And from that and the competition, we had a lot of fun and a lot of success.
Definitely the highlight of the competition was winning the Engineering Inspiration Award. This is the second highest place award and is given to the team that best promotes science and technology in their community. A team must present in front of a panel of judges to win the first place award and you're only allowed to present at one competition. Team Seventy-Five is planning on presenting at our upcoming competition in Mount Olive this weekend. We'd also like to thank. Uh, we'd also like to thank Assemblyman Jack Chidrelli, as well as Mrs. Lay and reporter Cheryl Macon for visiting our Rutgers competition. And if anyone else is interested in visiting, we would love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And good luck.
They don't need good luck. They have skill.
Good, good luck with that tech. Any other new business from the public? All right, seeing none. Any new business from the board? I haven't gotten anything from anybody, so I think we're ready to move on to the action agenda. At this time, we can have the public comment on the action agenda that, that we'll be voting on. Is there any comments from the public regarding the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we're going to move on. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask the board's consideration for the following motions under the section of education. The approval of professional travel-related expenses, curriculum writing is listed, overnight field trips approval, as well as approving the following field trip destinations, approving the tri-learning program at Sunnymead and Woodfern schools, approval of the family mass sessions, approval of the textbooks is listed, approval of the HIB investigative list and the out-of-district placements, as well as the approval of the Race to the Top Three grant application, the approval, um, submittal of NJ SBAIG slash Eric North Safety Grant Application, the approval of the IDEA carryover grants, and that's all.
Uh, Mrs. Haas, would you like to do the honors of making the motion?
On behalf of the Education Committee, I would like to move items A1 through A12.
Thank you, and I need a second. Thank you. Uh, any discussion under the education section? All right, seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Can we separate item A10, please?
Yes, all right. So we're separating out A10, and we'll, we are presently voting on everything but A10. Everybody good with that? All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski? Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
And Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, I'll take a motion on A10. In a second. All right, any further discussion on A10?
No, just, uh, again, I, we know how to run our schools better and administration knows better than bureaucrats in Washington, so.
I, I'll go forward with this comment that, um, if we can take their money and use it in a good way in our schools, then I will take their money. If, um, if, if we find out that it, it would not be helpful and it would be more, less cost-effective to, to implement whatever they want, then I don't think we would move forward with it.
Yeah, it's just, ten, money tends to come with, uh, unhidden strings or, or, or strings that you can see, so it's just a concern that I have.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
No.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kint?
No.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Under the area of human resources, uh, I am recommending the following motions for board's consideration. Approve the resolution on the ed jobs as listed. Approve resignations and retirements. Approve the revised retirements, revised leaves of absence, revised long-term substitutes, approval of leaves, um, the approval of suspension of employment, approval of new appointments, including vice principal, teachers as listed, long-term substitutes, lunch aids, after-school tutors, co-curricular advisors, mentors, and substitutes, and finally, motion to approve policy, um, 1631 on residency of employees.
On behalf of the Human Resources Committee, I'd like to move that the board accept items B1 through B9 on the agenda. Thank you, and I need a second. Thank you. Chris with the first and Dana with the second. Is it, would it be B10?
Actually, I think it's B7. There is a resolution that's attached that was discussed in executive session for B7.
We're good with that now? Okay, we're good then. All right, so any discussion on, um, B1 through B9? Dr. Rosenberg?
I need to separate some, a couple of things out, please. Um, first of all, I'd like to separate out B9. Second of all, um, I need to separate out one substitute teacher. I'm looking for guidance on how to do this.
You can just do the whole bunch.
I have a personal relationship with one substitute teacher.
Understood, but I would just, in the past, board members have abstained from the entire section.
Well, the section is extremely long.
Did you, are you concerned? Separate out substitutes?
Separate out substitutes. Thank you.
Uh, it's B8.
May I separate B7? I can't vote.
All right. Seven, eight, nine, any, any further bids or, all right, so we're doing seven, eight, and nine separately?
I do need to clarify for the board, and it was my mistake, I apologize. B7 is actually a different employee. We will need a B10 for the resolution that was discussed in executive session for suspension of employee. I, I think it does. Then we'll separate out B10.
Okay, B10 will be separated also. Under B8, we'll just, we'll do B8 except subs, and then we'll be, do B8 subs. I'll try to do it stepwise, everybody follows along, all right? Um, any discussion on, I think we're free for B1 through B6? Any discussion on B1 through B6? All right, so we are now voting on B1 through B6. Everybody good? Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. I'll take a motion on B7, please. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Pulsifer? Uh, I'm, since I was assuming when I read this that it was the one we talked about, without giving away information, we can't discuss here, can you tell us like when we would have discussed this particular one? To refresh the board's memory?
Uh, we can, we, hmm. Employee has not been raised. What we can do if we wish to is to table it, and then we'll, we'll go through that process and, and discuss.
I mean, I, I don't feel comfortable because I have no idea what this one is. I, I thought it was the one you're talking about, B10, so I was prepared, but now I'm, I have no idea what this one's about.
Understood. Why don't we table B7? And, uh, the board had been briefed on B10, so you can, you can fully, um, fully vote on that.
I'd like to make a motion to table B7. Postpone. We're postponing. Do we need a motion or anything? I need a mo, a motion to postpone by Mr. Pulsifer. I'll take a second. Thank you, Mrs. Lay. And then, do we need a roll call? A roll call, Mr. Mahmood, on postponing B7.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, moving on, we are doing B8, except the substitutes, all right? B8, except the substitutes. Is that clear? I need a motion for B8, except the substitutes. So moved. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Kint was first, if you care. Uh, any discussion on B8, except the substitutes? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. And now I need a motion for B8, just the substitutes. So moved. Thank you, and a second? Thank you. Uh, any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Abstain.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Abstain.
And Mr. Page?
Yes. All right. That was B8, and we are now on B9. I need a motion for B9. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion on B9? Whoever wanted separated, do they want to discuss it?
I don't think I know.
All right, seeing no discussion, roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
No.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, moving on to B10, which was discussed in executive session. So moved. Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, Mr. Mahmood.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Lay?
Abstain.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations to accept the much, monthly financial reports and the bills, line item transfers, and a resolution regarding the exterior lighting at Woodfern with that project in place. Approve the 12, the 2012, 2013 non-public instructional services agreements as listed, and the awarding of transportation routes, and approve the bylaw 0155, which is the board committees for first reading. Approve final school district budget for the 2012, 2013 school year.
Mr. Gillette?
I make a motion for the operations agenda.
Thank you, and a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. C8, shall we just separate that out at the get-go?
Yes.
Is there any, any other items that people want separated? C1 through C7? All right, then we're going to take, uh, a vote on C1 through C7. Is that clear? And it's, yeah, right, right. Is there any discussion on C1 through C7?
Just a simple one. I, I thank, uh, this, the, um, district for, for improving the lights at Woodfern. I, I, when I first came on the board, it was an issue, and it was a safety, and I, I'm so thankful we're doing it now.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no further discussion, roll call, Mr. Mahmood, C1 through C7.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, I need a motion for C8.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion on C8, the budget?
No discussion.
Um, Mrs. Bogacheski, take the active mic, please.
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you for, um, the extra teachers. And I wanted to say thank you for, um, the support of the capital projects and to make our schools safe and green. And, um, the community thanks you for the extra teachers. I think it's great that the, um, class size will go down, and it would be extra special if we can continue more teachers to have the maximum on class size B22. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Mr. Kint?
Real quick, what we're voting on is actually the budget numbers, um, which were generated in the way that, uh, Dr. Schiff presented, uh, based on the, the various committee meetings and that led to the tentative budget and the, and the ones after that. So while we understand what's going into it and where it's intended, we're voting solely on the, on the budget number.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, first I'd like to, ah, this is only on the budget, huh? Okay, all right. Then I would like to share with, uh, the public about the community, um, Community Partnership Network meeting. If only more people came out to it, we had a good chance to have a conversation about the budget. And I think that it allowed, uh, Dr. Schiff and it allowed board members to explain the thought behind the budget. So for example, when, we don't look at the 2% cap. I mean, it, it, it's about running a school district. And then we have to, um, look at our strategic plan and see how is that going to be met? What are the aspects of the plan? It's a five-year plan, but which ones can we meet now? And we look at the economy, what's going on, and, and as Dr. Schiff said, it is really a balance. We, we have to recover from the loss of the 66 staff members, but we understand that our town is recovering as well. The residents in our town are hurt by the poor economy, so it's a really delicate balance. And we, we're thinking about, uh, the needs of our teachers so that they can teach in a safe environment, as well as where are the stress points in each of the schools so that we could adjust for them. And so I do have a question, um, regarding those stress points. So for example, when we have, right now, we can't really tell that much about enrollment. Like, for example, at the high school, the students are registering. And I wanted to, um, I knew that in the high priority list, under human resources, we did have a, um, position for point three for the music teacher. And we can't, I, I want to be very transparent with everybody that right now, we don't know what the final class numbers are. But if, but obviously, there was a reason for it to be on the high priority list. So the question for this, as well as the, um, high elementary class sizes, how are we adjusting that for the next school year? How do we, what's our game plan?
Sure. We, we do an analysis, in fact, out of Mr. Rocco's office, um, to predict our enrollments for next year based upon, um, a variety of, of methodologies, including cohort survival, as well as straight line, kind of watching the kids go through. And, and we also have a demographic study that helps to, to inform our decision-making. Through that process, um, we have a relatively good sense of what our staffing needs at the elementary, middle, and arras are going to be. The real difficult part of this is the high school and trying to get the class sizes down there because the average class size may actually look okay, but that may actually mean because of the, um, inflexibility of, of some of the scheduling needs of a particular child, you could have under-enrolled sections and over-enrolled sections. So by, by staffing these positions, and we're calling them targeted class size reduction positions, we're not calling it a social studies high school position or a PE high school position. We're targeting that class size so that once that, that scheduling is complete at that point, then Karen Bingert, the principal, can say, you know, I only need a part-time math teacher in the afternoons because that's when I have the over-enrollment in those areas. I may only need a social studies teacher in the mornings. I may only need a chemistry teacher, you know, in the afternoon or kind of midday. So we don't necessarily have to, have to hire a full-time teacher in order to lower those class sizes. So by targeting it, it gives us a little bit more flexibility, um, to, to assign staff where we feel the need is for the purpose of just lowering some of those class sizes. And, uh, currently, within, within this budget, we have four positions that are available. And I would say four full-time equivalent positions. That could be eight people half-time. So we'll, we'll see what that, what that looks like as we're, as we schedule.
And how is that, um, what is the plan at the elementary school level?
Well, I'll, I'll send it over to Mr. Rocco because he did, he did the analysis at that level.
At the elementary, uh, level, we, last year, targeted class size reduction. And what we're doing right now is we are taking two different models, which is cohort survival and a rollover of students from one year to the other. So if you have 500 kids in third grade this year, they're going to be 500 in fourth grade next year. kids in third grade this year, they're going to be five hundred in fourth grade next year. What we're finding is there'll be fluctuations in grade levels per school, either an increase by one or a decrease by one, but it's basically going to net out to a change of, you know, one or two, one way or the other. It's not going to be a tremendous change. We were relatively accurate with our projections last year, and we're hoping by doing it the same way and collecting the same data the way we are, we're pretty much on target right now for addressing the class sizes in the parameters that have been set, which is K through one at a maximum of twenty-two and twenty-five maximums in two, three, and four. So right now, our early projections indicate some fluctuations in grade levels, but nothing that is a tremendous increase, and they all fall within the parameters that have been set.
So I understand the aggregate or the averages are working out, but there seems to be pockets of problems, not a lot, but just...
There could be a pocket, and there could be a pocket in one building that requires an increase in a section, and in another building, there was a decrease. So what would happen is we would move a staff member from one building to another to address the increase in that other building. And we see that, and we've been doing that in our charts. What we'll do from now until August is each month, we will take the enrollment data, we'll plug it into the formulas, and we'll see if there's any change in what's happening. And those formulas work relatively well, K through eight for classroom teachers. There's some other formulas that we use at the high school level and for related arts and PE at Autton Road Middle School and high school level.
Okay. Dr. Rosenberg?
Yeah, a couple of comments on the budget and some of the commentary that we've heard tonight. I think this budget is a reasoned compromise, and I appreciate very much. I know that I and others spoke out about the guidance counselor and the subpay and a couple of other areas, and they were put back in the budget. And I think that strengthens the district in especially in key areas. I'm very, very sensitive to the guidance issue and the need to attract more high-ranking colleges to look at our kids and not have them go exclusively one district south and a couple of districts north, but focus on our kids here. So I think the budget is a reasoned compromise, and I support it. I wanted to address a couple of issues, though. I do think that when you talk about competitiveness, the one way that this country, this town, whatever you want to say it, has been competitive in the world has been through education. And if you look at the stats of many countries, they do a better job at education than we do. And so if we're going to make our kids competitive, it has to be through education. And it is not something you want to cut so much. And I think even parents would say, you know, thirty-five dollars may be hard for me, but at least it's going to my kids and education and to the right places in education. And I think this is a worthy goal, and I look at my upbringing and other people's upbringing where education was valued, and, you know, if that meant, you know, you had to sacrifice in other places, you did. So I think this is the right balance of sacrifice and investment. I also want to address the technology issue. I don't think there's a profession in this country, not a single one, that doesn't rely out of necessity on computing. Even if you're on the retail floor today, computing is an important part of what you do. We are taking out antiquated desktop machines and replacing them with laptop machines. The difference in cost is not that much, and I think it's about time that the professionals who work in our district are treated like professionals in other industries, and they have access to the computing technology that they need to be more efficient and more effective. And I know that the district will monitor this and provide the professional development that's needed. I realize it's a big change, but every, when every teacher has their own computer platform, I'm very sensitive to the remark that was made by one of the speakers that said, you know, when you have one computer in the room and one person's logging off and the other person's logging on, it's a terrible mess. And I think this will be extraordinarily helpful. And I think at the end, we'll wonder why we didn't do it, we didn't do it sooner. Furthermore, and this is my last comment, we are revising the curriculum in almost every subject area. And what I would hope that this board would look at, since I will not be here, but I hope this board would look at, is how the computing technology is integrated into the curriculum. Makes no sense to put the hardware in the room if it's not going to be integrated in the curriculum. And because we're revising all of these curricula next year, the synergy of getting the computer technology and revising the curriculum is pretty much perfect. And so I would look strongly, how are we educating the kids differently? What kinds of assignments are we giving them? What are we doing with them that makes use of the technology? And when that happens, I think everybody will be amazed at the progress that we can make. So in summary, I think the right money's going in the right places. I think it's a reasoned budget. I appreciate the adjustments that were made, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pulsifer?
Thank you, Dr. Page. Sorry, Dr. Page.
Whatever.
I just like to say, you know, putting together a budget is a tough process. There are nine or maybe more different perspectives up here at this table. There's the input from the public, there's the input from our teaching staff, and all the things we need to do. And it's always a fight, if you will, between different perspectives and how do you get to something that we can all work behind. I'd like to thank my committee and Judy's committee for reasoned thought in the areas that we were supposed to look at. And I'd like to thank the operations committee for taking that input and taking that into account and making the adjustments that were made since the tentative budget. I think, and I've said before, I think there are a number of areas where we need to do more. I also understand where we are, where our constituents are financially. So I think this is a good compromise, as Mark said. I can support this, but I think we need to be mindful that we, because of the nature of how the cap works and everything else, that we're barely keeping up. And we need to make sure that as we move forward, we try to start catching up on some of the areas where I believe we've fallen behind and we need to catch up. I understand where we are this year, but I think we have to keep that in mind as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
This was, this being my first year on the board, also was, I guess, thrown to the lion's den on the operations committee. Spent a lot of early mornings and full days with Dr. Schiff and the team working with the budget. And it was definitely eye-opening, never having been exposed to this before. And Mr. Pulsifer and Mr. Rosenberg are correct. There's nine different opinions and nine different views on what we think is the right way to move the district along. And I'm happy that we are adding the full-time guidance counselor. Dr. Schiff knows that. I have been protesting to him about that subject specifically geared around college prep because, you know, our parents and our kids are under enough stress. Having somebody there to help them, to guide them, is going to make a world of difference. I'm happy to see that we're doing the targeted class size reductions. I'd like to see more of that happen in the future. And, you know, I think that at the end of the day, this is a good compromise between thinking about the taxpayers and thinking about what is best for our students and our schools. So I appreciate everybody's insight on this.
Thank you. I just wanted to, Mr. Kint?
Yes, just for clarification, when the tentative budget was presented, it was a point-four percent increase in the tax levy. Because of the reduction in the base, that calculated to about a point-six percent increase in what the taxpayer would pay? Is that right from what I recall?
Because of the rateables change?
I think that was about right.
Yeah, that's about right, yeah.
So with it going to point-six percent, then does that mean that for the taxpayer, their taxes will increase about point-nine percent? So it's a combination of the point-six plus the ratable. I'm just doing the math.
I think it's built into that increase. That's an actual increase.
It's everybody, everybody. That includes the impact of the ratable?
Yeah, when we calculate the tax rate, we use that new ratable number.
Okay.
That reduced by, it was nineteen million was the ratable reduction. So our calculation was based upon the most accurate ratables.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to comment on the technology that we would like to be able to put into the classroom in terms of the laptop. I know I've commented at this board meeting or something about my company getting work added me on Sunday night, you know, something I didn't get done during the week. I take on my laptop. I know a lot of people in corporate America do that. So the people questioning why teachers need laptops from corporate America, I would let them know that I would like to see the teachers have that option to do some work at home. One thing I'm thinking about is that we have a new system for reporting grades and homework and so forth. And right now, all it is, is reports and attendance, but come the fall, it's supposed to go and include homework and tests and whatnot. And I have never gotten as much of a reaction from people I know as the option of this system that's been put in, that they were saying that all their relatives and friends in Montgomery already had it, and that they wished they had it, and they're just thirsting for it, and now it's available. And things that people don't get done maybe at work would be able to be done at home or at a, you know, a relaxed setting or whatever. But, you know, it's something that they're also using it for teaching. So instead of replacing old, you know, desktops with new desktops, that money's being put into laptops, and we're going to get more from these laptops than I think we were getting from our desktops that were there, that were, a lot of them are old. And so that's what we're looking for in terms of getting technology to the teachers to help the students, to help themselves, you know, with the teaching, and on and on. And I see it very positive. And in terms of waiting and waiting, I understand that people go to, you know, I don't go to Atlantic City for the school board's convention or wherever they have it, but I understand that when people come in contact with other places around the state, that everybody, a lot of the state is far ahead of us in terms of technology. So waiting and waiting, I don't think is doing us any service in terms of the students and the professionals we have. So I think it's a great movement. Mrs. Haley?
I actually just wanted to express the one teacher that we had tonight in the pink in the back.
Mrs. Matthews?
As a board member, obviously, you know, I become that lightning rod of the public opinion of social gatherings and barbecues and whatnot. So what I do remind the public is it takes two minutes to send the Board of Education an email and express your opinion because I know I use those emails as a gauge for the way people think outside of my own social circles. And our patch and our beacon also do a fine job of covering the school news. If you don't have the opportunity, to also now watch our board meetings on YouTube or attend them in person. You know, we talked about the laptop initiative as early as the midpoint of January of this year, and it was a discussion that went on and on for many, many board meetings. So that information is out there, and like I said, I know that we all live very busy lives, but I would like to see more public interaction. That's how we know we're doing something right or wrong. So thank you for your comments.
And generally, we don't scream at people. Real, real. Mrs. Haas?
Yeah, I would just like to add to everybody else's comments that I'd like to thank everybody for their hard work. This has been an interesting process. You know, I believe in creative tension. I think it's very important for everybody to express their opinion, and I do disagree with my colleagues that there are nine opinions at this table. I have counted at least fifteen on occasion.
Then I started taking my medication.
But, you know, I really think that by bringing out all the different sides of an equation, we make sure that no stone goes unturned and that we come up ultimately with the best solution. Class size has always been most important to me. I believe the community shares that position, and honestly, it comes with a price. And I think we have wonderful teachers. I think our teachers, two years ago, struggled very hard to make do with as much as they had, and will always do that. And I commend them for everything they've done to help us get to the point where we are, where we can have this kind of a budget, where certain categories of costs have actually gone down. And I think that now that all of this has been vetted out, I always go back to the board member code of ethics, and it is our job here, which I remind everybody every year, to make decisions in terms of the educational welfare of children and seek to develop and maintain public schools which meet the individual needs of all children, regardless of their ability, race, creed, sex, or social standing. And I am prepared to support this subject, this budget, as long as our superintendent will confirm for the public and for the board that this budget provides whatever he feels in his professional opinion a superintendent would need for an excellent education, an excellent educational experience for our children because that's what our kids deserve. Good?
I confirm.
Mr. Gillette?
The point would now be to support the budget wholeheartedly and have the public support it as well. We really need to get public support for this budget. We're one of a handful of school districts that maintain the budget vote for your opinion and input, and I hope that you will support the budget on April seventeenth.
Mr. Gillette, now?
Thank you, Dr. Page. Several board members mentioned compromise when they spoke this evening, and I agree with that. There was a tremendous amount of compromise on this budget. When we began an operations committee, we quickly developed two proposals, one with a lower tax levy, one with a higher tax levy. And our tentative budget happened to be right in the middle of those two proposals. After hearing the budget input from the other board members a couple of meetings ago, we've compromised all the way back to the higher tax levy. That was a lot of compromise, and I want to thank the operations committee for working on that and getting us to what I think is a very responsible budget. Now, I'm going to agree with Dr. Rosenberg. I don't want to make this a habit. This might be the third meeting in a row, and there's only one more to go. But when I go out to the public this year and I tell them there's a thirty-seven dollar a year tax increase, I can say that that thirty-seven dollars a year is going to pay for something worthwhile for your kids. This is the second year in a row I can say that your tax increase is going to pay for something. In the other three years previously that I was on the board, all I could say was that your tax levy was going to pay for increased health care costs. And by the way, you're going to have less teachers and higher class sizes and less of the things you want. That's completely turned around. It's due to, a hundred percent to our teachers. And it's a wonderful thing. This is what we need to continue here. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't remind the public that eighty-seven percent of school districts in the state voted to move their election to November and deny the public's ability, ability, I'm not saying right, ability, to vote on the budget. We didn't do that in Hillsborough. We're one of the thirteen percent, I think the only two districts in Somerset and Hundredan Counties, that preserve their April vote and the ability to vote on the school budget. This is a responsible budget. I would expect and hope that the public acknowledges that and votes yes on this very responsible budget. This, I think, more than anything, will ensure that we can continue this April vote if we present a good, responsible budget to you that adds teachers, adds the technology that your kids need. I mean, this is, the technology is the things the kids need. We're not sending out the football team in leather helmets, okay, and out there on the gridiron, and we're not going to send our kids into the workforce without having the technology either. So we're doing things in this budget that are improvements, that are what the community wants, and I'm asking the public to please support the budget because it's responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further discussion, I think we're ready for a roll call. Mr. Mahmud.
Mr. Bogachewski?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kint?
Yes.
Mrs. Lay?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. And that concludes the action agenda. And that concludes the action agenda. We are on to old business. If there's any old business from the public at this time, you may bring it to the board and we can, once again, address it or send it to committee, that sort of thing. All right. Seeing no old business, any old business from the board? Mr. Gillette?
Yeah, I just want to say, I guess this is reiterating what Mrs. Haley said before. We had, we had a very long discussion, this is directed to Mrs. Matthews, I think, back there. We had a very long discussion on the computers, and yes, there was a decision made, a conscious decision, to invest in this technology in a fiscally responsible way, about $300,000 to $400,000 a year going forward, rather than, at this time, use that money particularly for class sizes. Both of those things will help kids. This technology in the classroom for the teachers will help those teachers that we do have be better teachers and improve their day and improve how they can deliver the stuff, the material to the students. So it was a discussion, it was over many meetings and committee meetings, and this is the decision that we have already made, and it was made well before tonight. We signed that a couple of months ago. So I just wanted to say that. Also, to Mrs. Morrison, I wanted to say, Mrs. Morrison, you're out there? There you are. That we've, I don't think we're ever going to get over this $3.2 million, the issue of it, until we kind of understand, like, the $3.2 million in savings was, and it's really pretty simple, the way I understood it, was over the two-years-and-three-month length of the contract, the lower cost, the contributions to healthcare and the other items in there generate, will generate over the length of that contract about $3.2 million in savings. That means we will pay $3.2 million less over that period of time than we would if we stayed with the old healthcare plan, not the state plan, the old plan, with the anticipated increases in that plan with very little or none, no employee contribution. So that's where it is. And specifically to the, to what Mr. Mahmood said, the healthcare contribution, it comes right in and goes right out to the healthcare company. So it, the fact that we don't have to make that contribution as part of the portion of the premium that we pay, yes, that's more money available to do other things, but it's not designated in any one particular part of the budget. And it's really not too difficult to understand, although I sometimes have trouble myself understanding it. But I think that's what the $3.2 million is, and we could probably get more clarity on that, too, if we wanted to. But I'd like to somehow put that to rest eventually, because we, I mean, anyway, I'll speak for myself. I appreciate that. I want this district never to have any problems like we had in 2009, 2010, 2011, where we had to lay off teachers. That's my worst nightmare. I don't want to think about that ever again.
Thank you. Mrs. Haley?
Just wanted to get an update either from Dr. Schiff or Mr. Rocco, actually, too, about today's instant alert. I had mentioned earlier that, for myself, I saw about a 10 to 12-minute gap between what other people were getting as far as the alert. And Mr. Rocco had pointed out that it does have to do with the specific service, like AT&amp;T or Verizon. So if you could just give us an update on that so that the public understands that sometimes there is a lag between what we're getting. Because when you get an instant alert that says that the schools are on lockdown, it's scary. So I think it's important for the public to understand the process.
Yeah, our instant alert system isn't instantaneous. It takes time in order to make those phone calls and to generate through. I don't know exactly what the time limit is. I believe, just by my experience working here, is that it could be 10 to 15 minutes after we actually call that in. But we, when we first did the lockdown, we did the lock, it was a modified lockdown. It wasn't a full lockdown. It was bringing the kids in from outside, no phys ed classes outside, we brought them inside, no recess outside, we brought the kids inside. And we were, continued our vigilance, or actually heightened our vigilance in all of the exterior doors for all of the facilities. But we locked down first, and then we wrote the instant alert, and then we sent the instant alert. Between the time that we actually locked the kids down and sent the alert, kids were texting immediately. So that does happen sometimes. Unfortunately, the instant alert is not instantaneous, but within...
But their texting is.
But their texting is much quicker, but they don't need to text to thousands of parents either. So maybe that would be a quicker way to naturally, now that I'm thinking about it.
Can we subcontract our students instead of...
Maybe.
I hear there's a rumor there's a lockdown.
But, yeah, but it's not instantaneous.
Thank you.
Mr. Pulsifer?
I just, I mentioned this earlier, but I just, it's my responsibility to nag one more time. The board does need to take care of doing the online process for superintendent evaluation, board self-evaluation, and board secretary evaluation. You should be receiving an email tomorrow morning with instructions on where to log in and how to go through the process. We do need to have this finished by, well, you can go as late as you want Thursday night, but Friday morning it has to be done so we can have NJ SBA staff do the follow-up so we can maintain our schedule. And I'm sorry that it's kind of tight, but because of our schedule around spring break, it leaves us with very little time to get everybody together. So if you could, please, get it done by, before Friday morning so that NJ SBA can do their work after that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to say a few things. I'm going to say that I believe this is a very responsible budget. Because we got some state aid and it went up, please keep in mind that when they say "state aid," it's your money that went to the state, and then they decided to return it. So we got a little bit more of our own money back this year. But even with that, we stayed under the cap by about $1 million. But even more, there's many positive things we can say about this budget. More money for capital improvements that keep the brick and mortar solid and the students safe. A return of the elementary language program, which is mandated by the state. That was one of the most painful things we had to cut. Technology and training for technology are in this budget. Targeted class size reductions in the middle and the high school levels. The elementary level had been targeted this year, and we anticipate from enrollment that next year should be a little better also. I should immediately point out that the additions we've made are taken in the context of reductions that happened two years ago. 66, 67 positions were eliminated with increased class sizes throughout the district elementary, the elimination of the elementary language position, program. And the, we had a strained system already, and it strained it even further. This budget puts things back into place in a thoughtful way, but not just rushing to get back to the same number that we had before. I would expect that after examining the way things run this coming year, that the district may look for additional positions that would benefit the district strategically. I also want to comment on the budget process. I try to do this every year. I would like to make something completely clear about the budget voting process. If the voters pass the budget, then the budget we passed, that we passed tonight, goes forward onto the ballot. If the budget goes onto the ballot and if the budget passes, then that's what our budget is for next year. If the budget fails, the budget goes to the township committee of both township committees, both Millstone and Hillsborough, who get equal say. They can identify areas to reduce and tabulate that amount, which gives us the final budget. The final number is given back to the board, and then we decide whether to cut in those identified areas or to do it elsewhere in the budget. Voting no typically means about a reduction of about $1 million. Two years ago, it meant a reduction of about $1.5 million. It could be less, it could be more. I'd also like to clear up a misunderstanding. I've heard some people say that because we should have cut one program and not another, or we should have added to one program and not another, that they don't agree with the budget and that they will vote no. If you're trying to get one program increased or not, one program not get cut, and that you're going to make that decision to vote no, then the program that you wanted doesn't get included when you vote no. The program you wanted doesn't get included, and the program you didn't want gets eliminated also. So a no vote and a failed budget just guarantees that not only your program will be cut, but the one you didn't like will be cut also. A failed budget is not, we disagree with the priorities of your spending, but is taken as a message by the township committee that you are spending too much. You can come to the board all year and tell us about your priorities and spending, whether you want to put it in a different place or not. But when you go to the, if you vote no, you're going to have a difficult time convincing the township committee that your no vote meant that you should increase spending. So just keep that in mind, that if you have different priorities, feedback to the board, coming to board meetings, the emails, that's the time when you say, we really think that you should go and look at a different area. But it's hard, after a no vote, to do any of those things because we are just looking at what we're going to cut from the reduced budget. All right? So, thank you very much. Anything further? Mrs. Haley?
I'm sorry to get the last word, because that was very good. But, Dr. Schiff, can you just publicly announce for the, for everybody watching at home, what dates we're giving back for snow days?
We said that earlier. Say it again. Say it again.
Did you say, I missed it?
It's not a problem. It's actually in the agenda. We're going, if two, if no additional emergency days are used, all schools will be closed on both May 24th as well as May 29th, a Thursday and a Tuesday after Memorial Day.
And our voting is on April 17th, 2:00 to 9:00.
Yeah, the high school AP governmental students will be hosting a board candidates night on the 16th, the day before the election. Exact times are available on our website, plus we will be posting it to our YouTube channel and make it available to the public as well.
Immediately. Hopefully.
It's going to have to be a quick one.
Considering. All right. Seeing no further old business, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Actually, real quick, with the...
Hang on, hang on.
Just real quick, with spring break coming up in two weeks, our normally scheduled meetings are different, so just if we can announce that now, that would be great.
Our board meeting is next Monday, April 2nd. And then the next meeting will be April 23rd, which will be the reorganization meeting with new board members. All right.
All in favor?
Motion to adjourn?
So moved?
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No abstentions. Thank you very much. We adjourn.
Either that or right, man.